Yep, there you go. Yep, she'll be here. Does anybody want to stand for your pledge, please, Jim?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call any order, on call.
Okay.
Here, what's your question?
Yep.
Welcome.
Yep.
Maura.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Fair.
I asked Fred to come tonight because he's got a mission he's advanced himself on. He's got some ideas for the city council at least to listen to. Is that fair, Fred?
Yeah, if they will.
We're listening.
Well, my name's Fred Duffman. I've lived here for twenty years or so. What I was proposing was a, I call it a fish shack if you want, fish house out on Black Hawk Lake. It'd be in Town Bay. I've been visiting with the DNR and a lot of residents around town. It'll be a DNR project, I guess you'd call it, because they have their protocol they have to follow no matter what. But all of a sudden, some money come available for some other projects that they must have fizzled out. It's about two hundred grams what they're offering. And being as we've already got our fingers in the pie, so to speak, from here four years ago, five years ago, I tried to get it through the DNR just by itself. And they had the money ready to go, and then they wanted to put a fish cleaning station with it. Well, I put it back on the drawing board, and then the money went away. So maybe this is the opportune time, because they found this extra money, if you want to call it that. Because I talked to Ben Wallace this morning and this afternoon. He gave me some more information this late, this afternoon late. If, he was saying proposing, he's thinking two hundred sixty-five thousand for the whole project. The finished project, he doesn't know what the idea would be on that, but he goes, one of the, if we could come up with ten percent as a incentive for the state to go ahead with this. We've already got the blueprints all brought up. We've had them. I've got this from Ben himself. And I took a bunch of pictures. I've sent some of them around here. I sent the favor that Ben gave me for helping everything out. If you'd like to see some of the pictures, I've got a bunch of them, if you want to look at them.
That's my, that way everybody knows what we're looking at.
Yeah. And I've got some internal pictures of it, which they, it's not the best. This is from the one down in Swan Lake.
I think these are all the same, those little stuff.
And they already, they've redone theirs here a few years ago. They put metal roofing on it, metal siding, and metal on the inside, so they took all the electrical out of it. No lighting, no outlets or anything inside that one down there. Ben was proposing to have some kind of electrical inside, you know, plug a little heater in when you're in your ice facility, a light. But that still falls into the category of you have to be out there by ten thirty, because it's out on ice. It's a, I think it'd be a wonderful, wonderful project for the cities especially, to bring more business to town. And more, if you will, business for all the businesses, the cafes, the stores, day shop, boats, all the boat areas. I don't know. I talked to Ben about putting some habitat stuff underneath it. He said that'd be a separate project. He'd like to have a rock pile underneath it too. He said this would all be underneath, because he said, you know, the people are going to jump off of it. And I said, bull-staffing it. He said, either that way they wouldn't be jumping into it, or they'd have to put it out far enough where they couldn't jump to it. Or both. That's, that'd be a separate type of project, like I said, so we'll see how that comes out. I asked Ben to come up tonight, but he was, already had another project going, so he should just go ahead and take all this with him. Present us with what we're.
So were you saying the Town Bay, Fred, exactly where at is it proposed?
From the, where the float dock is now, and east of that, to those, the cottons right there. We just say the cottons. They already had it marked out five years ago. I tried to get cost estimates of what the material would cost, but then I got to talking with Chris Robertson, and he says, you know, he says this would be for contractors only, so that wouldn't be the actual cost. I said, well, that's true too, so we just kind of put that down.
I guess I'd tell you that I had that conversation with Ben Wallace too here, just a couple days ago he called. And really, this is coming, coming up, the timing on it is two purposes, really. Fred had talked about coming to the Hometown Pride meeting to present this issue, which is on Monday night. So we would present this to the Hometown Pride committee, see if there's any traction there about having another, another project for Hometown Pride. But then as Ben talks about this, we got into the fact that, yep, all the planning is done for this, and that he was looking at a project estimate that'd be about two hundred sixty-five thousand. They told me, as regard to some money that becomes available for this fiscal year, and he mentioned two hundred twenty-five to two hundred fifty thousand. Again, available this year. What, so what that means as far as timing goes would be to have the project under contract by June thirty. So not, you know, constructed or anything, but have a project under.
But we would need this twenty-six-five into their account by April first, right?
Not necessarily. You know, they're looking, at some point, they're going to look for a commitment. They're just, they're not looking for payment.
They want some kind of commitment on this.
What says, we would need these funds in the REIT account by April first.
Oh, I didn't agree with you, huh?
This is the thing I just got from Ben tonight. That's what he says, and I said, well.
I think this is a great project, and when Fred and I first talked about this, I thought it just spoke Hometown Pride to me. Long-term plan, you know, thought it would benefit some residents of Lakeview and, and bring surrounding, you know, I'm all about bringing people into Lakeview to spend their money. So I thought it was a great thing, and you know, it was kind of a long-term project that, that we thought about and thought, I thought, go to Hometown Pride and, you know, see where this can go. And then this is kind of just like this little gift that's fallen down, and kind of, I would hate to see this passed up.
We're going to talk about some extra money funds here in the budget process, but I'm not sure what in sequence tonight. We're going to visit about some.
Well, I know you're going to have a, a meeting on your budget, and I said, well, if I can get there sometime in between.
But we wanted to hear, so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Yeah, I wanted to have some pictures so you could see what the actual product would look like.
It might be nice to meet you jointly with the Black Hawk preservation.
I'm sure they'll be in charge of it.
Maybe they need to be involved.
Five years ago, they were going to donate.
Yeah, they were going to donate the pilates.
The figure was, now, I'm thinking it was like ten thousand, but.
They're going to donate the pilates that it took to stick them to the ground.
Maybe should be sent in a presentation for them.
So you'll, you'll, if we can all kind of get together on that.
Exactly.
Give monies for everybody, because it has to be a donation to them. You can't partnership with them. That's my understanding of it, anyway.
But through the night, we're going to talk about some extra funds we might be able to use for that, so.
Okay. Well, this is, this has been one of my little pet projects for a lot of years, so.
We appreciate your efforts for that.
Yes, and Craig, is Craig Wallace still president of Black Hawk Lake?
No.
No.
Who else?
Scott Boone is.
Scott Boone.
Chris is vice president.
I'd already talked to Don Burner about it, but that was back then, and then just before he took off. This time too, I talked to him about it, and he says, I'm all for it. He says, I'm sure the Black Hawk would too.
Yeah, I don't think they were serious yet, I think.
Money left.
Right.
They're a little short on money right now, too, so.
But I can, after we get done tonight, I'll let you know how it comes out.
That'd be wonderful.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, that's what we do.
Very good project.
You want to keep them?
No problem. I would like to keep these, can I keep these, for your copies or?
I like, I like different copies.
I'll say, first, you want to just get some to me, that'd be all.
I just want to get them to Hometown.
Will you do that?
I can.
Well, Neil, there's stuff.
I want to keep that one. Let's keep it.
So, and you're on for Hometown Pride on Monday again, then?
Yep.
Fred, and Ben was coming to that one too.
Yep, I got him all upon board of that, nobody long time ago. And he's enthused about this, getting that extra money.
Wow, yeah, that's a lot of money.
Well, he's, he's done it last time, it's kind of upsetting, so.
Yeah, we've, we've heard this thing, this scenario come up a couple times before. There's money left that's available, and we wanted to use it, okay? We've heard that, oh, two or three different times.
Yep.
About a modern restroom out at Ice House Park. You know, and then they'd get some stuff ready, and, and then always, some snag happened, and, and then the project never happened. Just, this would be one of those opportunities where if there's some local input and some local buy-in and some local match, really shows a lot more.
Yeah. Twistle or fresh shot, we're local.
Out of Ice House then?
Yeah. Well, you know where the cottonwoods are, out east of the float dock?
Yes.
That's where it's going to be. There's kind of a little dip in there, and there's some rocks and stuff in there, but they'd still put more habitat in there for the fish. I think it'd be a damn good location. I think it'd be an absolute wonderful project.
I think you're right. It always takes a process. It's always a process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to review the graph?
Yeah. Let's, we're just going to walk through some budget information tonight, and then several questions for you. And then always open to questions when, when you have any. And first of all, first thing is just take a look at this information chart that I, that I handed out to you tonight. And these are just general information from the League of Cities about the rollback figures. How that's property tax rollback, and you can see how everything is across the years. That last year, rollback was at fifty-six point nine percent. This year, it's at fifty-five point six percent. So what that means is that, you know, you're only taxed at fifty-five point six percent of your, of your assessed value. So in essence, the rollback went down about that one point three percent. Multi-residential, that's that middle gra, our second graph down. The rollback schedule for multi-residential goes down three point seven five percent annually until it gets to be equal to the residential rollback. Okay, so every year, we use, we lose three and a half percent value on multi-residential structures. But that's unique there, that there is no backfill from the state for the multi-residential. Up on top again, you see commercial and industrial at ninety percent. But right now, that is backfilled, and the city's made whole for, for that difference. And it's, it's in the governor's budget again to fund that for, for this upcoming year. It's getting to be where it'll be pretty difficult for them to continue to, to fund that. You know, we can expect at some point that that's not going to continue to happen. Third graph down just shows DOT per capita estimate of revenues for road use tax. So I left that up on top about FY two thousand fifteen, and it was ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. Then they had the gas tax increase several years ago. So the per capita had went up then to a hundred and twenty dollars, and rises just a little bit every year, and it's up to a hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents per capita for our eleven hundred and forty-two residents. And the bottom one then is the IFRS rates. Now, this year, there is a change to regular IFRS contribution rates, okay? So you're comparing July one of seventeen to eighteen. See that the employees rate, which currently is five point nine five percent, their percentage goes to six point two nine. And then the employers' rate goes from eight point nine three to nine point four four. So it's about half a percent additional paid into the IFRS account for each one of those employees. Protection class, that's our, our law enforcement, there was no change in the, in the IFRS contribution rates for this year.
Who sets that rollback percentage?
The state of Iowa does, and it's somehow coupled to the value of ag land, and it can never increase more than two percent now. And it's pretty complex.
It's, the city has nothing to do with that.
The city does not have anything to do with it. Okay, but I'm into the big packet now. Take a look at, at some of these things we went through at the previous council meeting about, this shows taxable valuations. I highlighted our line there that shows our taxable valuation going up seven point oh eight percent. Difference this year being point, four point seven million dollars additional. So our total taxable valuation is seventy-four million dollars. That does not include our TIF value, which is at the bottom. You see that our TIF value then for this year is five point seven one three million. And we've always been interested in the percent of our valuation that's included in the TIF, and it remains constant, a little over seven percent.
So why does it say include in utilities? I don't understand why, how does that work?
The, well, it's been ten years, but I suppose now the, the state had some property, it was a property tax relief bill for utilities. So utilities no longer pay a traditional property tax, but their value is still computed in there. And it is done more for debt capacity and this type of stuff. They don't pay traditional property taxes. They pay other types of taxes through the state, so the city receives utility tax funds. And show you how much these utility tax funds are. For us, it's not a dramatic amount, because we're primarily municipal utilities. Next page, page three, just is that same breakdown of values that we, we looked at at the council meeting last, last week, showing that we're really heavy residential, eighty point seven percent residential. And also then you see that we do have some, some ag, a little bit of ag land, but see, that's actually less than one percent. We're about eight point seven percent commercial and seven percent industrial. That seven percent industrial, a lot of that's included then in our TIF district. That multi-residential, where we're experiencing that rollback, we're less than two percent on multi-residential, for less than two percent of our valuation. Page four is just really, and just FYI, just a ten-year historical look at property taxes. You see that over the course of ten years, we, we continue to see consistent increase in our taxable value. And then we've, we've had the same property tax levy ever through that, that same time, so we see roughly that same amount of increase in total tax dollars. It's off a little bit because of how our TIF, TIF figures in there. So you see that our total tax, taxable valuation over, over the last ten years gone up, that's sixty-nine percent. And the total tax dollars to the general fund has gone up seventy-one percent. Again, just really FYI. Page five shows that property tax analysis again, that we looked at last, last week. As we look at these budget numbers, they're all put together, assuming that we have the same property tax rate as, as we had this current year. It's eight dollars and forty-five cents per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. So this just compares this current year, and you can see what, what our total assessed value is. Last year, a hundred twenty-two million, this year, a hundred thirty-three million. And then you see what the taxable value is relative to that. Last year, sixty-nine million, and this year, seventy-four million. The general fund tax levy for this year, if we had the same total tax levy, seven, seven point four one. And then the debt service tax is one point oh three. Really, what, what we do is, we know that we need that eighty-two thousand four hundred twelve dollars for debt service for this year. And then the general fund tax levy is, is just whatever's not needed for that debt service. So to, to create a total tax levy of eight dollars and forty-five cents. We'll have a little further discussion on tax levy, but as you look at these budget numbers, just know that, that that's based upon just having the same tax levy as what we have this year. Page six looks at wages. And a couple notes there on the top, where wages for all full-time employees are assumed to increase three percent. So just for budgetary reasons, everything's put in at three percent. All summer wages are assumed to increase that twenty-five cents from last year. Okay, we've had a policy that we act on every year about whether, whether the returning summer employees would get a twenty-five percent, uh, twenty-five cent pay increase from, from the previous year. These wages, the proposed wages, show that in there. So for the sake of having a conservative budget estimate, we wanted to include that in there. You'll have, at some point, you'll take action about whether we would implement that twenty-five cents.
Why would we give them twenty-five cents if they don't show up for the safety meeting to begin the season?
Who could that be about, Mayor?
Well, if one of the others shows up, everybody else has to go. I just think that there ought to be a.
It's not a requirement?
Mike, Mike Mitchell hasn't, I don't know if he's ever.
I don't know, but he still gets the twenty-five like everybody else. Jack McGivern could give the speech.
One of the part-time ones, or what?
Yeah, he's a summer help.
Plus, why do we mess with them?
I'm just saying, I, I would think we wouldn't give them the twenty-five if they don't show up for the safety meeting.
If you don't want to play by the rules, then we don't need them.
Yes, I think you're right. We could send a letter to everybody and say, if you don't show up, we'll get your call.
It's, you know, it's always advertised as mandatory.
So they ought to show up.
Then you need to enforce that mandatory.
Yeah.
Scott?
Whose job is that to enforce it?
On page seven, I noticed you budgeted three dollars for overtime for the electric.
Because that had been five, it's, it's three thousand dollars is what it's supposed to be, but thank you for my idea.
We just were going to let that slide.
It has been five dollars, Scott?
Actually, it had been, it was always three thousand in the past, and we'll note that as we talk about that, that overtime's up a little bit. Not well, excuse me, I'm talking wrong, wrong departments. Overtime's up a little bit in sewer, not in electric, and it's been about three thousand dollars consistently there. Next page is page eight, goes through those city insurance costs, and again, nothing's changed from when we discussed this last week. Just wanting to note the, the total then that we budget, the bottom few lines here. Estimated cost of the insurance, two hundred forty-four thousand dollars, plus we, we're, plus the retirees' premiums of twenty-eight thousand. So we budgeted two hundred and seventy-two thousand. You'll actually see them in the budget, there's two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars budgeted there. We receive those revenues for, for retiree health insurance, okay? We just need to turn around and show it as an expense.
So that's on monthly, they pay monthly?
They pay monthly, and they're both, they're both set up to where we get automatic bank drafts, so they come out of. Outstanding debts, again, we reviewed this last week, and, and nothing was, nothing's changed out of that as far as the total amount of debts. And just that the only one that we, we utilize property taxes exclusively to pay for is that top one, the Streets G.O. That's all paid for by property taxes, and a special assessment that we get off of that Sunset Drive. Second one down, Boulders TIF is paid for by some, some TIF, and then also by hotel motel taxes. Sack Beach G.O. is, is paid for by some TIF funding, and then primarily through a special assessment. That Boulders pays a substantial special assessment every year. Okay, and then electric, water, and sewer revenues, those are all paid for by the revenues off of those utilities. Uh, one thing to point out especially is that electric revenue note. See that we issued four hundred fifty thousand in December of twelve. There's two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars outstanding on that now, with paying another forty-five this year. The point there being, we would propose to issue more debt when we do our big rural project again. So we may very well want to look at refinancing that existing debt then, so that we roll it into that debt, and there's only one debt service payment. Um, the other thing to note on sewer SRF is final, final payment on that would be June of two thousand twenty. So we could potentially overlap one year payment on the old SRF on the plant and the new SRF on the Lagoon.
Um, backing up to that, Whitey, you, Whitey mentioned this last time, maybe depending on the interest rates rolling, then together may not be.
Potentially not, you know, we certainly would take a look at it.
Great, so.
But, and seeing how things work with cash flow, having to make two payments. We have three internal, internal debts that we're repaying back to ourself. At that first one on the sewer jetter, we had borrowed fifty thousand dollars from, the lost from, from local option sales tax. And then we repay that ten thousand dollars a year back from sewer revenues. So this would budget the last payment then for that. Uh, the internal debt for the water tower comes from the Electric Improvement Fund, and we've repaid ten thousand dollars there for two years. There's twelve thousand two hundred to be repaid yet for this upcoming budget year, and that would be paid off. And then this internal debt, uh, TIF debt, where we had borrowed three hundred thousand dollars from the Electric Improvement Fund. And next year would be the second payment then that we would, would make on that, the hundred thousand dollar payment. So there'd be a hundred thousand dollars still outstanding.
I'm sorry, not white, but Ken, that's hard.
Never know, never know.
This, page ten is just year one of the Capital Improvements Plan. And just want to note any changes. That, looking at updating the Lakeview website, and I had put down five thousand dollars there, and as we get into this more and get some solid quotes, we're, we got a quote for between eighty-five hundred and ten thousand on that upgrading of the Lakeview website. That Dropbox, the walk-up Dropbox, it's there, and we haven't had that discussion yet, but there's eight hundred dollars that, that's included in the, in the budget for a walk-up Dropbox. No other changes there to that first page, no other changes to the remainder of it. On sanitary sewer, I'm not sure what I have put down as far as project costs for the lagoon, but trying to figure out what project timing would be on that. We'll see that I have a million dollars in this current fiscal year budget for work done between now and the end of June. And then three million dollars in the, in the budget for work to be done then next fiscal year, sometime after July.
So you have a total of four million?
Four million. Um, there's, the engineering fees are in there too, so it ends up being four, a little more than four, four point two. No, because we still don't have that environmental. No, because we still don't have that environmental clearance that we're supposed to get the clearance from the historical folks. Any day now, they were saying. Any day, and then we're, one more clearance from, uh, N R C S on that too. Then as soon as we get that, we would officially be able to, uh, have the finding of no significant impact, which the acronym then is FONZI, F O N Z I. Uh, and you'll, you'll hear about this FONZI, where we gotta give thirty days' public notice about the FONZI. And then we would hope to, uh, be running bid time concurrently to that, so... Any other questions on the Capital Improvement Plan? If it's here listed in year one, it's included in the budget. Page twelve is, uh, just a note that within the budget, there's lots of transferring money in and out of certain accounts. Like, uh, we transfer money to our capital projects account when we're saving money for certain purchases, then we would also expense it out of there. And then also, when you, when you pay any debt service, you can only pay debt service out of the debt service fund. So, that, uh, would have us transferring lots of money into the debt service fund. And, uh, because that's the only place it can be paid out of. Just the point here is that when you see this six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of transfers, basically, it's, it's shown in the budget twice. Okay, cause, cause it'll show as an expense once, and then if it's expensed out of that account, again, it would show twice. So, um, uh, just know that six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of our budget that we're looking at is accounted for through these transfers. All right, now, page thirteen, just, and it shows the big picture on each fund and how the revenues, um, would compare against the expenditures. So, just as you, as you read it across from left to right, you see which fund that we're talking about, the projected revenues for, for next, uh, next fiscal year. The department that we're talking about, some of our funds have smaller departments under them, and then the amount of requested expenditures, and then the difference. So, that's just the revenues minus the expenditures to come up with what the difference would be. So, as you look at the general fund, and you add up all the police and fire and library and everything, and you can look at those expenses and see the nine hundred forty-three thousand dollars worth of proposed expenses. Revenues into the general fund are nine hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, so when you go to the right, still has a difference, twenty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars. So, you can kind of think of that as twenty-two thousand dollars to the good, okay, or not in the whole.
That adds to it every year, and what is in the current?
Yep, and I'll show you the balances here on the next page.
Okay.
Yeah. So, then, just, uh, for, for the rest of the funds, the road use tax, um, hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars of revenues. And we always figure, uh, we, we always transfer that, uh, the remaining amount of money into our street construction fund, so that, that's always an in and out, so that's the same. Uh, sales tax, about ninety-nine thousand dollars worth of revenue this upcoming year, we propose, uh, expenses of eighty thousand. Tiff, the revenues of that hundred thirty-seven thousand, and expenses this year of a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Explain that to me, Scott, so I understand that.
Okay, so, we're, we're getting those Tiff revenues from property taxes exclusively, okay? Now, the hundred fifty-five thousand dollars worth of expenses out of, uh, out of Tiff are, the biggest ones, a hundred thousand dollars to repay ourselves for that debt.
Okay.
Okay, then we pay, we have two other debt issuances that we're paying a portion of, and that's the, the, uh, Boulder, Boulders, uh, the hotel debt out there, and then that Sack Beach debt, that's all paid for partially through Tiff. And, uh, but the other thing that's included in here is a project, and that shows twenty-five thousand dollars worth of expense for that Camp Crescent project coming out of Tiff. Okay, so we'll, we'll go through this and, and have that discussion about...
And when was that approved?
It's not, this is a, this is a proposal.
You're proposing to take twenty-five thousand dollars of Tiff funding for the campground, is that what I'm understanding?
Yep, yep. Yep. And you look at hotel motel, the, uh, revenues and expenses are, are equal. Special assessment, that really is an in and out, the only thing that you use special assessments for in this case is to pay the debt. Debt service, um, just, uh, very close to where that's an in and out then also. Um, that's receiving property taxes for the street debt, but then also all of those transfers to be able to pay the debt out of that. When you get to capital projects, you see the, uh, the revenues that would be proposed to come in through each one of these. That we do have some revenue coming into our street capital fund that is just transferred revenue from road use tax. So, whatever was spent in road use tax, we have historically transferred into our street construction fund. And we're able to save a little money over the years to be able to do a project periodically. Um, planning funds, that's, uh, kind of a catch-all for some donations and that type of stuff, we figure about ten thousand dollars worth of donations and some, uh, interest money. Speed trailer there shows, uh, that we would figure on this four thousand dollar grant for, uh, for the speed trailer. Okay, fire truck, does show a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, projected revenue and a, and a two hundred ninety thousand dollar expense, okay? Yet, that's, uh, us paying for that chassis using, basically using cash on hand, so that's the amount that the fire department already has saved. Okay, that two hundred thousand dollar revenue would likely be a debt. And that'll be, uh, one of the things that we would discuss here yet about whether that's a traditional bank-issue debt, or we'll discuss, uh, opportunities for, for internal financing of that also. S R F sponsored projects, the four hundred thousand dollars there is three hundred fifty thousand dollars for, uh, the Fish Barrier Project. Uh, fifty thousand dollars for drainage and green infrastructure at Camp Crescent. Part of that Camp Crescent Improvement Project. Water tower, um, that seventy-eight hundred bucks is the amount that we receive annually for site rent from U S Cellular for their tower up there on top of the water tower hill. And we just have always taken that money and set it aside in a water tower fund. And use that, uh, for water tower cleaning, painting, anything like that. Okay, our public works building, our public works or electrical building, um, this shows revenues coming in for eighty thousand dollars and expenses at two hundred thousand dollars. So, it shows a hundred twenty thousand dollars short. We, at the end of this current, uh, fiscal year, we will have saved that hundred twenty thousand dollars, that's just why it shows, shows as being short next year, we've saved that amount of money for it already. So, the concept here is, uh, you know, if we would look at a two hundred thousand dollar project in next year's budget, we would have enough funds on hand to do that. For the ones called general, public works, and electric, those are all the capital funds for each one of those funds. So, general is primarily anymore, it's buying, buying, uh, police vehicles. Public works, and then electric, they each have their own, uh, own fund. We add to those every year and then periodically expense from them, so I'll show you the balances in those here in a second. Dump truck, we talked about, uh, establishing a capital fund for a dump truck purchase. Either, uh, either a new dump truck or a nice used one. Okay, this proposal would fund sixty thousand dollars to a special account then to purchase a dump truck in, in future years.
The cost being, you're estimating the cost for the dump truck at sixty thousand?
Uh, it was, huh, one, one oh-five, one-ten, is that where they were on that dump truck?
Can't remember the used price and the new price, Scott. Proposal, your proposal to put this in the budget so it's in a fund?
Yeah, we would, we're just funding...
We're not looking at that next year, right?
Right, we wouldn't look at the purchase, we'd look at, we're setting money aside in the fund.
We're gonna run these till they go run them or...
It's pretty gross for the right now.
Would you put a...
That's like me.
Would you put a snowplow in front of it on these trucks, or...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And a sander?
Would that be a, would that be a new purchase, or would the old?
Oh, the sander?
The blade.
The blade, hold on.
You priced one with, with a new blade on it?
Yeah, that was priced with it, yeah.
Okay.
I thought it was a hundred and twenty for everything.
The yellow truck has a sander and a new blade on it, see, this is what we're talking about, the green one.
Yep.
Okay.
By the time we get it, it'll be a hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
Blade, sander, the whole nine yards.
Could be.
Yeah, okay, this was curious, I put that on, included, okay.
Water utility, see total revenues versus expenses roughly the same. Sewer, um, projected revenues and, and expenses, of course, they're huge because of that, uh, because of the lagoon project being in there. And then electric, again, roughly the same, um, on electric. Now, that, uh, that electric does show us doing that underground project and that we're, we're bidding now. A lot of that would, would come out of this year and then the following year then also. Garbage, the, uh, running a little bit in the hole, uh, on garbage. And we've seen our expenses continue to, to rise on it. And this year, we had one additional expense that would be really unique and won't happen again, and that's the purchase of that roll-off container. But now it is costing periodically to have that dumped, so there is some additional cost there too. It's running this year twenty-six hundred dollars in the hole, and then meter deposit that roughly runs about the same, uh, in and out, about sixteen thousand a year. And take a look at the next page. This is where the fund balances are then. So, um, so, uh, again, this is broke down by fund, and you look at, at, say, the general fund and just working your way from the top line down, where we took the actual, uh, beginning balance, the actual beginning balance of seven-one-seventeen, that's the actual four hundred and eighty-four thousand. Okay, I reestim, I have reestimated revenues and reestimated expense to have a, uh, a pretty accurate picture of what, what things would be yet for this, for the remainder of this, uh, current budget year. So, then you come up with what the projected ending balance then is at the end of this current budget year. Of course, that becomes the beginning balance for next budget year, where we would put these projected revenues and, uh, subtract the, uh, projected expenses. You can come up with the projected ending balance at what it would be of six-thirty-nineteen. So, um, as we look especially at that, at that general fund, you can see what the, what the ending balance is then, is projected to be, uh, at the end of eighteen-nineteen, five hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. Good rule of thumb on fund balance for the general fund is, is keeping around thirty percent of your expenses, because about a third of the year has gone by before you'd ever get any property taxes in. So, we would still, uh, you know, look to have a balance in there of two to three hundred thousand dollars. Like, say, the balance here is five hundred thirty-four thousand projected.
So, run, say that to me again, the percentage that you would want to keep in your general fund?
Um, about thirty percent.
About thirty percent of budget?
Yeah, thirty percent of, of budgeted expenses. And that's, uh, really just for cash flow purposes then, uh. For a typical community, they may not see a whole lot of, of revenues coming in during, during the summer months until they're getting their property tax, uh, payment, which shows up in, uh, around October. Get that first property tax payment, we're a little unique, because we continue to get revenues in during summertime largely from the campground, but we do get some revenues in. So, you can see what all of the, uh, projected fund balances are, just working our way across there, road use tax. We never keep too much money in that, we always want to try to, uh, make sure that gets over to the Streets Capital Fund, so it could be expensed for, uh, street projects. Sales tax, twenty-one thousand. The, uh, Tiff fund, you can see at eighty-nine thousand. Hotel motel, uh, still at, at fifty-eight thousand. Debt service, again, that one's always, always, uh, pretty small, because, uh, everything that comes in is turned around and expensed out. Water utility, about forty-three thousand, that's staying consistent with the, uh, ending of this current year. Okay, sewer one, the, when we look at the sewer utility, I want you to, if we can look at that other packet, that's the one number that's changed on this, is, is the sewer utility. The balances on the sewer utility. I wanted to run those numbers again to make sure, and really see how, how our revenues, uh, were coming in, uh, after you took out the lagoon project. So, we took out any revenues related to the lagoon and took out any, any expenses relating to the lagoon, and I still wanted to just see if we continued to grow balance. And what we see is that we, we continued to grow balance, probably not as much as, as we should, but we also see that our operating expenses, uh, continue to, continue to go up. And, and the past couple of years, it's been driven a lot by, uh, lift station repairs. Okay, um, so, uh, this number on this, on this updated one, it would be the actual balances that we're looking at. At the end of next year, a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars in the sewer utility fund. Now, with that, though, you can add to it the lower right-hand one, which is that wastewater treatment project. Several years ago, we started setting some money aside for that, so that's at a hundred and ten thousand dollars also. We're not continuing to set money aside for that now, of course, we're into the construction. Electric utility, um, electric utility is actually, uh, looking pretty good, uh, and it just has everything to do anymore with how we can purchase power. And our purchase power arrangements are very advantageous, and, and, uh, that helps out with our keeping a substantial balance there. There's that garbage utility, um, where, looking at the, the balance at the beginning of this year, and then you can see, it did have some, uh, additional expenses out of that. So, the balance, which had been twenty-one thousand, goes to fourteen, and would continue to, to go down next year to, uh, eleven thousand dollars. The, the, uh, expenses continued to go up then next year, uh, even though we didn't buy a roll-off container or anything. The biggest change in expenses for next year was the, the, uh, assessment out at the landfill. Had, had gone up, uh, a few dollars per, per capita. And you can see the, uh, balance there, customer deposits.
But that expense at the landfill, that's our expense, not Rudd's?
That's our expense.
Yes.
Okay, so, basi, out, out at the landfill, you know, basically, there's two kinds of expenses. There's, there's the tipping fee, okay, and Rudd pays the tipping fee for everything's picked up in town. And then there's a per capita assessment, the city pays that assessment.
And he's got what, for your contract, did we...
Our, uh, contract will expire in November again this year.
Cause the landfill's paying to, uh, get rid of one of the, you know, close it all up, the cells.
I thought it was.
Yet, they're still doing it, and then they, then we had to build that building for the collection stuff.
And don't they have to keep so much money in escrow?
Oh, yes. Yes, lots of money, lots of money.
Okay.
In case something goes wrong, we want to make sure you got a million bucks.
So, is that assessed to all the cities then, per capita, or how's that work?
As far as I'm aware, it's per capita.
Okay.
They have a lot of formulas too, I'm sure.
They have a lot of what?
Formulas, how to pay for this, pay for that.
Get it counted, work.
There you go. Bottom half of that page then shows some other specific, uh, funds, including the capital fund. So, see what we did with our street project this current year, and, uh, our street fund, uh, with that large project, you know, basically, we expensed all of it. So, see what we did with our street project this current year, and, uh, our street fund, uh, with that large project, you know, basically, we expensed all of it. To have a balance of about nine thousand dollars, so it would be starting to, uh, rebuild that fund again. Although we do show some expenses out of that next year, that's, this shows, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, a seal coat project. Seventeen thousand dollars paying our share out at the, uh, that intersection at Dixie.
We get paid as a city to, to clean this, uh, road around the lake, right?
We do.
What, what kind of cost, or have we, uh, have you got an idea, Bill, what it, what it costs us every time we do that to? I mean, you know.
I put some numbers together before.
Easily figured out.
Well, I'm just saying, is that, is that something that we can negotiate again?
Just two hours of ma- maintenance, but around.
That's what they offer.
So explain that to me, cause as you annex around there, you've got less and less capacity, and what's that going to do then? I mean, am I understanding it right? Is that where you get the, the, this payment from the county?
It actually comes from the DNR, so.
From the DNR?
We're, we're reimbursed for snow removal, basically on North State Road and South State Road.
From the DNR?
From the DNR, yep. We get about fifty-seven hundred dollars a year for snow removal on that.
From the DNR? Why, why does the DNR pay for, oh my gosh?
The DOT gave us the DNR, right?
Well, so.
Say, doesn't it come from the DOT?
It's the Parks Road.
Yeah, North State Road, South State Road are actually, uh, Parks and Institutional Road. So that's all part of Parks. Now, all of, all maintenance responsibility is always turned over to the DOT on that.
Okay.
So the DOT maintains it, um, but DOT did not want to have to continue to plow snow on it, so they struck this deal. I suppose we've done this for ten years from now.
Well, I remember when the state plows used to go through there, you know, they used to go through there.
When, when we annexed that area, and this is two thousand or, or two thousand and one-ish.
Right.
And we had obligation then to clean snow out there in Black Hawk Development area and, um, you know, hold frontage or sunset dry. Then it made a lot more sense for us to just clean everything out around the lake, cause we had to get out there anyway.
We had to have the DNR, and with the DNR section, Willie Clausen, they actually have a voice in that too.
Really? I did not realize that. I always thought it was DOT. So, so as we annex though, I mean, what, isn't that gonna affect that a little bit?
The, as we look at that annexation area with Bobby Carroll.
Right.
That area there is actually county.
Right.
So that one, that one's a little different, so.
And we don't get reimbursed from the county?
Nope, we would not.
Well, that's true.
Do we get reimbursed for the old two-forty-three?
There was a transfer jurisdiction payment on that that was a little bit for a little while and it's gone away.
So, we plow this county, kinda?
We do, and we, we do. And that's kind of an informal arrangement that we have with them, and they help us out with some mowing and stuff during the summertime.
Okay.
So it's cutting edges at their cost or something, don't they?
They do.
Dubs or the blade.
We talk about the county?
The county will help us.
We buy the sand from them?
Yep, they will do.
They buy bulk and saves us money. So you won't see any of those bills come until after the season's over. You know, the sand bills and the bid bills. You scratch my back, I'll scratch your back.
It works. Uh, second one's on the bottom there of the page, uh, second from the left, it's general capital, public works capital, electric capital. Those are just the, uh, balances then that we keep in each one of those funds. So by the end of, of next year in the general capital, uh, fund there, we had thirty-two thousand dollars, so we would, again, look, be about the time for purchase of a new vehicle again, so. For the, for the place, yes, boys.
So on the electric improvement, that, then we're just working towards this big project, right?
We, you know, um, the electric improvement fund, you just think of it as a rainy day fund. Cause that is, is just having some, some money in for.
Severe weather.
severe problems, you know, we.
Found that out.
I think we had.
Beat her a thousand, wasn't it?
We had gotten that up to six-hundred thousand dollars, something like that, and we had that ice storm, it's gone. Just that quick. Um, those sinking funds, electric sinking, sewer sinking, water sinking, they're, those are just funds where we put money in there monthly to be able to pay debt service out of. Okay, so, um, it's a, a requirement of some of our, of our, uh, the resolutions for that issuance, that we gotta keep sinking funds, we gotta have so much money in. Basically, that's just assuring that come the end of the year, when it's time to pay the principal, there's always some money in there. Uh, two far-right columns there, maintenance building. Just seeing that, um, this current budget year, this, uh, we had set aside forty thousand dollars previously. Set aside eighty thousand dollars for this year, that's coming out of sales tax. So at the end of this year, we'd have a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars set aside for that, and then, uh, uh, next year, we'd propose in this upcoming budget to, to add another eighty thousand dollars to that, and I'm, uh, we'll go through that, I think it's sales tax and electric money to, uh, to go towards that, so you'd have two-hundred thousand dollars then, which could potentially then be used for this maintenance building. Then also, uh, there's a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars in this, in the wastewater treatment, uh, fund that we would use towards the, towards the project, uh, or, or for, uh, cash flow within the sewer fund. Any, any questions on, on that, kind of on the big picture? The rest of this big packet is the line items for every, every revenue line item and every expense line item. Would you like to go through line items, or would you like to? Jerry, I was quick.
Well. Cause there's something major, I don't know.
Let's get to the last one.
Well, I'm not sure if this is where I throw this in, uh, but I, I don't, I'm, I'm not in favor of using those TIF funds at the campground at all. So I don't know where that.
But what's more use than the campgrounds in this town?
I don't care. We, we have money and we should be able to pay for it, and it shouldn't come from TIF. You're just, you're just, that TIF should be something for this community and just keep picking away at it.
Like a housing project?
A housing project, uh.
But do we wanna buy ground?
I don't know, everybody I got.
Using it, we'd use it for infrastructure.
Right.
Housing project.
I was gonna say, we don't wanna buy the ground, but we'd use it for infrastructure, you know?
But if you just keep frittering it away at the camp, I just think the campground is successful and it should be able to pay for whatever expenses it has. And TIF should be something that helps the people in this community, not in such a roundabout way. It should be something that they can have, either housing or, you know. I don't know, wellness center, I, I don't know, there's all kinds of things that can happen, I think. I just think it should be something the community, the residents of this community are going to get some benefit out of it. That's what TIF is designed for, and we have plenty of money that I don't think you need to use TIF. I think it should be held until, because TIF isn't gonna be here forever, so if you can't run this budget without TIF, what are you doing anyway? TIF isn't gonna be here forever. That TIF is kind of like a gift, and if you don't use it right, you're not gonna give it anymore, I mean. And we have, we have used it on the campground before. That's my opinion.
But we could use TIF to buy ground and put roads and stuff in so we could sell lots, people would build homes.
We could use TIF on infrastructure.
We can.
But why do we wanna buy, do we wanna buy ground and sell ground?
I don't know, we, we're not having, every identified housing is a problem, and our goal is, I just don't know what else we do.
Can't we let private investors and we do the infrastructure?
Well, yeah, we can talk them into it.
Right.
I, I just, you know, a lot of towns have them, it takes some years to sell them, but otherwise, unless you can buy a, a spare lot around town, where are you gonna buy a lot? That is reasonable, cause all we wanna do is sell the lot so that we can get property tax off it in the end. We're not a billboard money like the investment is.
You know, and I think TIF could, you know, it depends on what project you come up with, but you know, Main Street, I don't know, maybe there's something there that, you know, we don't have anywhere for any new business to come into. We've got buildings sitting up there that people aren't using, they're just sitting on it. And I don't know what we can do about that necessarily, but I'm just saying, I think the TIF money should be held for some kind of project. And if you use it for infrastructure, then that's fine, but, or, or business is gonna expand or something. I just think the campground should be able to pay for itself. The city shouldn't need TIF funding.
The building that he's been trying to repair, for example. The weird and property. TIF funds could be used to demolish those or clean those up.
Again, yeah.
Cause we have a court date on the guy on town, but it's, what's that court date?
August.
August.
He did a lot of fixing, but then he quit.
Yep, then he quit.
Well, and then, and you've got that property that's owned by, is it owned by Vogue or whatever? Where, where TJ's was, it just sits there, it looks awful, nothing's, it's not used for anything. They don't, they don't care if we have any new businesses, so when we have a new business that wants to come into town, you know, there was a gal that wanted to have a coffee shop here, um, you know, then of course, you know, we're not even gonna talk about the trophies thing. And then, you know, the gal that had to do the nail place, she had to leave, I mean, we can't even get a little tiny business in there because.
And Hesse's building now.
Well, that's a different Vogue, but yeah, um, so, yeah, I mean, I just think that we're stagnant up there. And the, and the property owners aren't helping.
Danis, yeah, I know, yeah.
Nothing's happening.
I had a look, they was looking at it a couple times, but nothing's ever getting done.
Some of the stuff, like if the city owns it, we could push this, or if the city owned this property, we could do something, but if we have, if we don't own anything, we can't force anybody to do anything.
We're stuck.
We're stuck, so you almost gotta buy something to push it through or.
Or breathe a battery, you need to have a little bit of pressure, because they just sit there, all these properties. You know, one, one is sitting there holding displays, how nice is that? It's perfectly legal, I'm just saying that, I don't know, we need some kind of a plan.
Tis place.
I don't think TIF money, if you need TIF money to, to finance the campground, then what are you gonna do when the TIF money's gone?
It's just a, you know, um, a good spot for it because it's better than nothing to get away, that's, you know, that's the only thing.
So what are you gonna do when the TIF money's gone?
Run it without.
Right, and that's what you should be doing now.
That's fine.
TIF is a gift.
But I can't see buying ground either.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say how to do that, I'm just saying it shouldn't be used for the campground.
I don't think we're gonna, I can't believe people are gonna like that very much for us to go out and buy ground and sell ground, I just can't believe that, it's just.
Then you have to have someone else that's going to come in and buy the land.
That's right. And then we do the infrastructure.
Yeah, there was a project, you know, we should, we should.
You at least have to work with them when they come in, and we don't have very good history of doing that either.
We should, we should take a look at areas, you know, that you just listed, um, buildings down at the end. And what, what we can do to market them.
Which encourage growth.
Encourage growth in those buildings or.
You know, they talked about a senior center, but then, then Legion.
See, I don't think you need a senior citizen, senior center per se, I think you need a community center if you're gonna go that route. And it, and you could have a, a wellness thing tied in, and I understand that we have a business that does that, you certainly wouldn't wanna hurt them at all. Or maybe they could be involved in, I don't know, I just think it shouldn't be to benefit seniors, it should be to benefit the whole community. If, if we ever go that route. You know, place where kids can go, you know, I mean, because it's harder for the school anymore, there's so many safety and, you know, they just don't have the open door policy that they used to be able to have. And so there isn't a lot of places, and there's nowhere for community events to go on really, and the Legion's very nice, it's just not very big. You can't go in there and play racquetball or. You can't, you know. Anyway, I just, my point is, I just don't think, I think the TIF money should be saved, and I think we have money to cover the campground expenses. That's why.
So I'm, I'm back into the smaller packet that was on the, on the table tonight. Flip another page and see, where the top says options for general fund balance. But before we talk about that, let me just bring that up about those two points at the bottom. Because there is nothing in the budget about these two goals that came out of our goal setting session, okay? Things about that economic development organization and getting something in place about having an economic development, uh, organization and having some assets or wherewithal that the economic development organization can act. There's nothing in there about that, and then other thing, uh, just that broad definition of residential development, there's, there's nothing in there about that either.
But can we put that money into one of these deals and we gotta use it in a certain time, right? That TIF money?
It has to be used within a, within a certain time, but I mean, it's not within, you know, not.
This budget.
Not within this upcoming budget.
No, I mean. No.
It, it's, it is. If it's gotta be used within a certain time, I can't tell you the definite time. I do know it's gotta be used for definite purposes. And those, the, the use of it is, uh, is more defined than the time.
So, so if we put money, think about this, uh, economic development organization. Wouldn't that kind of, if you had that group together, kind of, wouldn't that spin off into helping develop a residential, you know?
I, I think it could spin into both. So the question being is how much money?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, like I said, is there some towns around that's got this that, that could help us on, tell us what, what it takes, what are goals or they're, they set for themselves? I mean, I, I mean, I know it's not a good idea, I understand that part of it, but money that, how to use that.
How to use the money?
How to use the money.
And how much money?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Cherokee County would be a good one.
Okay.
They're really active, they have their own Cherokee County Economic Developer. In fact, the Ledger Slater from, I live in Sioux City, he just resigned to be the Economic Developer of Cherokee County. They're very active, uh, when Cherokee, the, the whole county. I think you get a lot of good information from there.
Okay, I mean, like I said, I'm somewhat between lost and found on it, you know?
Yeah, cause I don't know, I mean, do you know, Scott, do you have some idea of how much money a, a committee would need?
No, you know, cause I, I guess it's just as we look at this and know that we're in the organizational stages, if there is some money there for administrative purposes, that's the main thing right now. You know, in my mind, if you budget five thousand dollars to this organization.
That's a start.
It, they won't be handstrong with, with money problems right away at the start. You know, when, if this organization's truly active and getting in, into a lot of, of, uh, different dealings, it's a lot more money than that, but it's probably not public money. Pretty limited on, on what you can do with some of that stuff. So, uh, yes, from a budgeting perspective now, I'd just look at, at having some administration money available for.
For mailings and things like that, or whatever they might wanna do, okay?
And just, yeah, and my, my number that I would associate with that now would probably be five thousand dollars.
So how would you go about, would you talk to some of your business leaders or?
Most of what we're gonna do is send them all a postcard and bring them to a meeting.
Oh, okay, that's right.
But then we had some events that got in the way, so we'll just. Scott, I think we're gonna get some names, send out postcards and get them all to meet sometime, and then we'll pick out a committee out of the group. Well, we'll.
But it would be nice to say that, you know, the city is, is supportive of this group and.
Yeah, we'll be sent out there, we did make a financial commitment to somebody at last, just to get this thing off the ground and see what happens.
So, would you add, be the same people that work on Hometown Pride and, and the Community Club? Because you don't really wanna take the people out of those, cause then you're gonna get burnt out, I mean, how long have you been?
Well, gee, I don't know, I think I'd double dip a lot.
And a lot of people do.
I think that, I think this committee, my opinion would be that it's more of a business. You know, which is what Community Club used to be, kinda, but I think you'd want some progressive business people, I think the banks, I think the, the. You know, maybe realtors, insurers, people that are gonna have some input as to how a community could grow. And attract, you know, whether it be developers or businesses.
Have a vested interest because they have businesses in.
Right, whereas Community Club is a little bit more of a. Community organization, you know, that's promoting events and people to come to, you know, it's not really focused on. Trying to go out and draw businesses in, or, you know. I, I just think it needs to be a little more defined, I guess, the committee.
But if we send it to each individual business, at least they've all been offered a chance to come to a big meeting, then we'll pick out a committee out of that group.
Yeah.
Cause you want to.
See, see what interest is out there among them, I mean, I think the business people are a little frustrated, as business people are in every small town that's losing. You know, and I think that their attitude could be lifted up, especially if the city did.
Right.
Show interest.
Continue to move forward.
So, um, on this financial Camp Crescent projects, you're, this is suggesting taking the twenty-five thousand out of TIP?
This, those items there at the top are some potential ideas that if you wanted to look at reducing the, the general fund balance. We could utilize that money for some, some other uses. Before we take a look at the expense side of things, look at that top bullet about reduced property taxes, and then flip the page one more time. That is, I mean, in that other little packet. That just shows you property tax reductions, even if it's just a few cents, and what the impact is, uh, equates to in dollars. Okay, there's a highlighted line there, um, at thirty-one cents, or having a general fund levy of seven dollars, ten cents. That basically is, is close to a break even line off of what the current budget is now.
This way we accumulate so much money, cause we're not allowed to have that much money on hand.
Yeah, it's, um, I mean, it's not illegal.
No.
And it's never even actually been mentioned by our, uh, by our honor, but.
But every year, this, this general fund has been growing, the last years, it just continues to grow, grow, cause you're not spending.
We wanna keep, gee, our operating funds, we got two hundred that we could use for some of these projects here. I think we might still be able to go with them, we brought that up to blast council, lowered the tax rate.
You know, I, I guess, as long as we have projects, cause it's easier, it's harder to.
Go back up, after you go back down.
So I would rather see us put more money in the streets, you know, um.
And do the other projects.
Do, do the sewer, you know, we could, we could put more money into that sewer project, so maybe we won't have to raise the rates as much. Because if something happens to values and all of a sudden, they start going downward or something, we're really in a pickle.
Well, in a year or two, we're gonna need fifty thousand to clean up the old sewer plant.
I'd like that too.
Yeah, that's not included as an expense with the project.
Yeah, it's gonna come.
We still haven't got a solid bid on it either.
Exactly.
But that wouldn't come out of your general?
Oh, no, no.
No, but, but the general, we could take money out of the general fund to help those projects, correct? But we can't take money out of those project funds to help in the general fund.
True.
Is that saying?
Yeah, I do, um.
But here's where you could dedicate some money to the Fish House.
Right.
Right, exactly.
That's what I was gonna say, the Fish House would be a good.
I'd like to see.
Exactly.
I would like to see the whole thing come out of this general fund. Because Scott, if we put in this twenty-six-five out of the general fund, which would be this year's general fund, but whatever. Um, and then this falls apart, like you said it might, with the DNR, then they just reimburse that money back there, yeah. So, I, I would like to see that.
Yeah, I guess.
Ten percent in there.
I, I hadn't, I still haven't read the points on, on the left, where I talked to Bender, and, and the number was fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm guessing that he was kind of making phone calls today too, or trying to.
But he said he got that information from them.
Right.
And, and the garbage thing, if we could take, move some of that into the garbage things. You know, anything so we don't have to raise the rates on the garbage.
Right.
Or if there's a chance we could, you know, use the money and it might make a little bit of difference on the sewer rate increase. I think, to me, that would be better than.
Well, I, I put that number in there, and that's a number that I'd suggest to you about sewer, to look at a hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, that, that will help us with our, our financial situation and our cash flow in these first years of, of making debt service payments. Because as, as we really looked at the, at the sewer fund, we have, we have continued to raise more money, but expenses have gotten up too. And, um, again, been big chunks from these, uh, from these listings. And we proposed to do another one next year, and, and so, I, you know, I guess I'd just look at that.
And, and we talked a long time about the streets, not, um.
Seal coat.
Seal coating, you know, and how long is that gonna last, Bill, seal coating usually?
My theory is that doing all the cement's not gonna keep up.
Right.
So the other option is to seal coat and patch.
And that's a band-aid for how long, would you say?
We did the one in Valley New Mars, that turned out great, overlaying them down here, then the Main Street.
Depends on traffic and.
Because our, our debt on the last project we did was ten years?
Ten years, we paid one year, so we had another nine.
So you wouldn't look another ten years to do another project, you have to say, there's a lot of problems with these streets that have to be addressed before ten years.
Right, we got that, we got the tree project with the, so, you know, we got a lot of projects that are pretty much underfunded.
Yeah, the trees, there's, there, there's a line item in here for twelve thousand dollars for trees, which is a couple thousand dollars for, for tree maintenance. And, and trying to save that ten thousand dollars.
And I like Vicki's idea of using money for that.
Can't press it on the Fish House and the Sewer, those three.
So, let me understand this then, you're going to finance the Camp Crescent project at twenty-five thousand?
Damn it. My original budget, there Ricky had twenty-five thousand coming from general, twenty-five thousand coming from TIP.
Right.
Okay, they would just not use that TIP money, it would all come from general.
So we do fifty thousand.
It ends up being fifty thousand as an expense, yeah.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Ten percent of Fish House was twenty-six thousand, wasn't it?
Yes.
Right, twenty-six-five.
I don't want to be wet blanket, but that's not our exclusive responsibility.
Well, the thing is, here's the thing that I was thinking about that, you know, when you were gonna do Hometown Pride and, and this was gonna be a, a fundraising. Which would still be, I think, but you have to have those ten percent in there, so how does that work? Because, yeah, the city shouldn't be expected to maybe carry that cost, but if you have this timeline, there's no way, I don't know how you're going to, I mean.
You'd get the Black Hawk. I'm sure they, they'd wanna help out something like that.
And what, what'll be is that basically we can make a commitment, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure that we wanna expense a bunch of money, but.
We're not gonna expense unless they build it anywhere, they'll never leave us unless they start.
Scott said he had a bunch of people giving money to that raise.
So, I mean, maybe we can come up with some money before this April deadline through fundraising, is that, Tammy, you think so maybe, we, that might be possible?
I would think so.
But.
I don't know how we're doing on the debibulator.
Letters.
Well, just a couple things, so they were about at seven, over seven thousand dollars, is what court said yet today.
Letters went out.
And then the letters went out today, so.
So I guess what I'm saying is, is that you, if you budget it, doesn't mean you have to use it. And if you have it ready and we need it to make that April deadline. Then would the, would fundraising be able to reimburse the city, or how?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
You certainly could, the urgency is gone if the city's already paid all the money.
Well, I don't know, because you have this project that they estimated it, I don't know how those things go, joy's right more.
That was back in two thousand thirteen.
Yeah.
I can't believe that could cost that much.
No.
Well.
Everything's, everything's gone up higher though.
Building it on water is probably even part of the cost, but anyway, um. Then you could start the fundraising thing, because you, you're not gonna say, well, it's already been paid for.
It's like the, this here, the, the city maintenance shed, it went up twelve thousand from last year to now.
Exactly.
And it's just gonna get higher and higher, but, so that fish shed, I'm sure, went economically high.
I just think you could start a fish, a fundraiser, this is, and, and put your estimate higher, try to get better figures, I'm sure, before we send out something. You know, if Hometown Pride takes this project on, and, and just cause the city's paid twenty-seven thousand, isn't that, I mean, that isn't gonna say it's already been paid for, I don't.
No, we're still gonna go out and try to raise the funds.
I'm very much in favor, so I think it's a great project.
And, and like I said, I think that you do that and you get, you know, the Black Hawk League people involved, and I mean, I, I just think that it's a good project.
We have to, April would be that.
We could still put it in the budget, doesn't mean we have to.
Yeah, I think so too.
Well, you know, for, for budget purposes, if we actually, uh, it would be an amendment to the current budget, it would all be taken care of before, before this next budget year.
But then we're, we're gonna need to get, you know.
So in other words, we're gonna take it out of this, we're gonna make a motion to take it out of this year's. So we don't need to budget it, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, that's right.
I got it, Scott, I caught on.
No, sorry, he said he's Ben or Fred.
He said that were Ben.
He said Ben gave it to him.
He said Ben gave it to him.
These aren't friends.
I think so.
Well, you know, the thing about that too is what the state likes, the more people who get involved in it, it's more of a community. So like I said, if, if the city shows some interest, the, the Black Hawk, Texas Association, Hometown Pride.
The Men's Club maybe.
You know, but I mean, you know, you know, Ben's crowd could do some donation of, of work, you know, whatever, you know, what I'm saying, there's a. I think the more people that you bring on board.
The better.
The better it is, and they, they see that it's a whole community type situation.
It's a community project.
And I think Ben and Fred are willing to do the legwork and go and speak to every, I mean, that's what he's indicated to me. He was willing to go and speak to every group, cause he had previously, you know. And then, um, just in case the DNR comes up with this two hundred thousand, you sure wouldn't wanna look, look at gift cards.
No, that's why I say it's, it's an opportunity here that doesn't roll around everywhere.
You said that's two hundred twenty-five to two hundred fifty?
Yeah, he told me two twenty-five to two fifty, and was what, was what Ben told me.
And this thing's gonna bring people to town year round.
Sure.
Yes, it will.
For a long time, anything to bring people in town, it's a cheap investment.
They spend a buck, maybe more.
They don't all come with full tanks of gas and a cooler full of water bottles.
And a belly full of food.
So we could do some Fish House, we could do the Camp Crescent, Sewer.
Sewer.
And Sewer, put some of it to the, maybe twenty-five thousand or to the seal coat?
Um, you know, we sure could, well, it, this budget says twenty-five thousand dollars for seal coat. And just that it runs two bucks a square yard, you know, and that's, that's due in twelve blocks.
So that's twelve blocks per year, right?
Seal coat, if you wanted to level it before you seal it, it's a lot more expensive than that.
If, if you lost your crown of your robe, then they have to put an overlay on the crown, and then they seal coat over top of everything.
And that's the blacktop and pebbles, right?
So, are we doing, we're not doing any, we're all done for this fiscal year, right, for something planned? And so this would be for next fiscal year, so you're thinking fifty thousand?
It, if we looked at fifty thousand, um, that could do a substantial project with some asphalt leveling underneath it. Cause we can bring in a crew to come seal over what's there, but then it's, you know, it's uneven just like it is now, you know, when it's done.
Well, if you have to seal coat, I would think you'd wanna do the best job you could.
Like, the, the blacktop guy did that job on the street project, so him and I drove around town.
Trying to identify.
And that's what he recommended.
Till we ran out of money, then we stopped driving around.
So then fifty thousand's probably the best word to go?
Yeah, well, how, would you, are you looking at a fifty thousand dollar project, or you'd add fifty thousand to the twenty-five that's in there already?
I'd say go with seventy-five thousand, fifty, twenty-five.
Yeah, that would give you a good.
Is everybody okay with that?
If you go like today, where, where there's water sitting on the road, you can see exactly where everything's at, like the whole street of Lakewood.
Cause our streets are way better than most towns around here, even our poor streets are better than some.
So we have fifty thousand for the Camp Crescent project, the fish project is not gonna be in here, right?
Not in, not in this.
And the seventy-five, the seventy-five thousand for the seal coat, that's the two things we've agreed on right now.
And we had discussed sewer.
Sewer, hundred thousand for the sewer.
Hundred thousand for the sewers, I guess, okay.
That would hopefully leave some of that.
You didn't even pitch the really, really big bike.
Nobody seemed to brought it down, just another tourist attraction.
You know what, I like, I think it would be awesome.
I like it too, but I'd also like using it, help the taxpayers.
Did they sell that bike up there early, John?
No, they moved it somewhere else.
Oh, and they didn't sell it?
It ain't big enough.
Somebody ride it somewhere?
No, gotta have bigger than.
This one's a big bike.
Yeah, yeah, a little bigger, cause Perry's got the biggest one in the state, so, we gotta be just a little bit bigger. Haven't given up yet, I got another plan.
He's always got a bike, he's an old man.
You know what, there's this place in Sherdane, Iowa, that's doing a whole bunch of, um, steel ironwork. And they're doing decorative stuff, like to even sell and house it, you know, like your walls or whatever. But I'm just wondering, they're kind of an up and coming company, I wonder.
So is Tanner, too.
Yeah.
He sells a lot of stuff to.
I was gonna talk to Tanner about the bike.
Did you?
No, I'm going to, cause he's, uh, he's young and he can, he's got a vision.
Yeah, there you go.
He does a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
That's cool, very cool.
He did, he did the bike, I have a map by the, where the trail starts, he, he cut all that out.
He did that, okay.
Um, just, uh, the question of then financing Fire Truck, um, would likely be that we would issue traditional bank financings, is that what we're thinking?
Yep.
Well, just continue, we'll finish on one, we'll just continue on with the other, like we had passed.
We, yeah, we actually have a, a year, which, where we don't have debt to pay. Now, the way this is gonna end up working out is that we're, we're going to save that, basically, not save the money, they're utilizing that to pay for the chassis. So, they will have enough, basically enough money on hand to pay for that chassis. And then we're only financing the, uh, Fire Truck part of that.
Well, we need to finance this so the townships pay their fair share too, we don't wanna pay it all out of our funds, that's wrong.
We could pay that money upfront, but I wouldn't suggest to do that, cause you want that into that annual, uh, formula about how the costs are allocated. You want the townships to pay their, their share.
So for this general fund balance, then you're not proposing anything, you're gonna just keep it as a debt?
Two hundred thousand, yep.
Yeah, it's, that's the question for the group, um. That's the question, would you like to do this as an internal debt issue, and so we look at the bank again? And the, you know, bank even, even if rates go up a little bit. And the, you know, bank even, even if rates go up a little bit, still it's gonna probably be three percent, yeah, and that's.
Just patronize the banks.
Pretty good, we issue some money.
I, I think I would rather see it go through the debt.
And we have enough money to actually do the maintenance building.
We do, yeah.
And the goal there is to get rid of the monstrosity.
Eventually, until they fall down.
Well, so this, um.
Spent my home job for thirty years, thirty-one years.
We're gonna give you a new home, so you can't leave.
Yeah.
We're gonna get new truck, you can't leave.
Okay.
So somewhere back in all of this, there was money that was put back for the maintenance building, right? Because you said we would have it. And that's not, that doesn't include this fifty here, I mean.
No, no, that, that would have just been additional, because, you know, by the time we look at this, here's a cost estimate and, which is now for the building from Chris prepared this, hundred forty-four thousand dollars plus a heating system and concrete, which gets us up to two hundred thousand, which we would have that money on hand, but it doesn't do anything for finishing the inside or spray foam of the walls.
Right, that's spray foam walls.
Oh, that's in there?
Yep, and it's insulation in the ceiling, just like the cement. We don't know if that labor is right, it's pretty close.
So you wanted, or your idea of having this listed is to just put fifty thousand dollars aside for extra cost associated with that as a savings account thing?
Because nothing's ever what you think it's gonna be when you start.
Right, for sure.
You know, because.
Kind of like the sewer project.
Yeah.
Exactly like the sewer project.
It's gonna be higher.
Now, I, as we think about the sewer project more too, and, and we look at this, putting this money in transfer, I guess I would make this pitch that we would actually put that into this current fiscal year and transfer it before the end of June.
You're the budget man, sounds good.
Not, not put it in budget for next year, but to put it in this current budget.
You mean for the building?
No, for, for the sewer, the transfer to the sewer.
So take it out of the general fund now?
To take it up, it would just be, we'd do a budget amendment later on this year and that would be included in the budget.
That sounds like a good idea. Publicize it.
It'll be on YouTube tomorrow.
Have a picture.
I'd throw your offer in.
No, no, we gotta fix what it runs now. I didn't think it'd be, but the other one works.
Check out my notes, because I have. Uh, for the public workshop, it was forty thousand dollars from sales tax, forty thousand dollars from electric. For the dump truck, it was thirty thousand dollars from sales tax and thirty thousand from electric. And I guess I would point that out to you, especially on the expense side, the last three pages of this big packet are notes about which projects should take them out of which accounts.
As long as you don't get lost in it, we're good.
I think I'm okay.
I commend you for it, did a good job.
Well, you know, for this budget, um, we'd add five thousand dollars for that economic development organization, which I would propose would be from hotel motel taxes.
I'll do too.
Okay.
Okay, um, from the, from the general fund, it'd be fifty, an additional fifty thousand dollars for the, a larger seal coat project and an additional twenty-five thousand dollars from, to finance all of the Camp Crescent project. Couple things yet for this current fiscal year would be to transfer money to the sewer fund and then have the match money available then for the fish house. And if I'm thinking right, that would be the only proposed changes then to the draft budget.
So two of these items are gonna come from this year's budget. So the only things we're adding to next year's budget is the seventy-five thousand total for the seal coat?
Yep, and the.
Fifty thousand for the Camp Crescent project?
Yes.
And putting fifty thousand away for maintenance?
No, no, I think we're okay without them.
Okay.
We should have that uncovered. We might need a few dollars to get rid of that cement and the bins disappear.
So twenty-six five this year out of the budget for the fish house.
Well, we won't go until.
I know, but that's what we would.
That's our agreement.
That's our agreement.
And make Fred happy, and all the anglers. They're now using cameras in the hole, especially when they're written down, look on their phones.
Well, you know, there, I think there's still that perception out there in places that the lake isn't good. Because, you know, when it goes bad, it goes bad and people know bad and they, they don't sometimes, we used to see comments once in a while on Facebook about, you know, the lake's awful and all this stuff.
It's not just like you though.
No, it's all.
That's, that's the whole issue.
They got real problems.
Well, it's, it's, but if, but if you, if you have a bad restaurant, it takes you ten years to build your rep up, that's kind of what I'm saying, it just, you know.
They got the final drive fix for the harvest for the other day.
So the more people we can get here to spread the word.
Well, there's, there's enough advertising going out that we are making commitments, you know. You do a good job, I'll tell us in Casey, I am, you know, about what's going on in the city of Lakeview, what we, what we talking about doing. And it really sounds progressive, it really does, and that's what we gotta, we've gotta keep that image as a progressive community. And then we can't just be limiting on our past morals.
That's exactly right.
If we do nothing, we go backwards, right, why do?
Yep.
Any other budget related items? You'll see some of these, oh, the, the, doc, the, oh shit, the, all of the, the comprehensive documents. They'll, they'll come back to one of the council meetings and then you'll be asked to set a public hearing date, which would likely be the first meeting in, um, March. But, but other than that, it's pretty good then on, um.
Water carnival tomorrow night?
There is water carnival.
If anybody wants to go, the library.
Tomorrow night?
Yep.
Um, a couple, a couple other things, that, so the union bargaining, what was supposed to be tomorrow night, they, they would like to push that off till next Tuesday, the thirtieth, at six. And.
When are you, when are you taking off?
I'll be here.
Will you?
I'm not leaving till the thirty first.
All right.
In the afternoon.
We're gonna plan on that unless anybody's got any.
Bargaining snowstorms.
And just my other, my other note is this Hometown Pride County Celebration, that's this Thursday night. It's at Wall Lake, but they'll have some presentation about what all the communities are doing with Hometown Pride. Okay, anyway, uh, everybody's welcome to come. And we'll talk about that, uh, Heart Monitor project again, Dave, so.
Didn't they want, uh, everyone to possibly, if they could, bring maybe something to, an over or snack or.
Talking snack or sandwiches or.
So, yeah, there'll, there'll be snacks there.
Cookies.
And cash bar.
Yep.
I won't be there, because it's a cash bar. I won't see anyone there.
That's Thursday night.
Thursday night, seven o'clock.
We need a motion to adjourn.
On second or third, whatever you want.
Follow the paper, say aye.
Aye.
In the journal.
Thank you very much. Still going?